Call this meeting in order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items for closed session this evening. The first is conference of legal counsel existing litigation presented to government code section 549569D subsection 1. The name of the case is Derek Sweet, claim number 4A22010F6M7-0001. Second item is conference of legal counsel pending litigation per government code section 54956.9D4 one case. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session.
I'll just run the house next door, Brad.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Welcome.
Thank you.
This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you for that. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Harris had something to attend to, and we're hoping to see Councilmember Shaw shortly. We're going to begin with the invocation, which will be led by Pastor Greg Mansour, who's the pastor of the Adventure Church in Yuba City and will remain standing. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be given by Laura Nicholson. Please stand.
All right, shall we, Greg? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for a cool room to meet in, and we are mindful of those who might be struggling today and this week with the temperatures. Watch over them, protect them, and we pray that they would be as cool as possible. Thank you for this meeting tonight, and for these council members, and for city staff, and we pray your blessing upon the agenda items this evening. Thank you for their service to our community, and we pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment. Thank you all for the sacrifices that they all make on our behalf, and I pray that you will grant them your wisdom tonight as they discuss. Thank you so much for our first responders. Thank you for our police officers, for our firefighters, for our EMTs. Father, for all the work that they do. Keep them safe, keep their families safe. Thank you for the sacrifices that they make, and we ask that you would put a hedge of protection around them. Father, we are just grateful for our city. We're grateful for this place that we call home. I pray that you would help each one of us to steward it well and to shepherd it well and to see in whatever way we can make a difference in the lives of our neighbors and fellow citizens. We ask your blessing on this evening. Tonight, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, seated. Okay, city attorneys, report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you for that. Agenda modifications, approval of agenda. Due to recusals, item 13 will be pulled from the consent calendar and voted on separately. Item 21 will be continued to the regular meeting on August 15th. We're going to begin tonight with ceremonial presentations. Number one, retirement proclamation for Sergeant Dennis Hauck. I'd like to invite Police Sergeant Dennis Hauck to come forward and council to meet me up front as well. Looks like you brought some friends. A lot of friends. Just based on what I saw the other day on social media, you've made a very positive impact on the residents of this community, and I think that speaks a lot. So, thank you for that. A proclamation in recognition of your retirement, whereas Sergeant Dennis Hauck started his law enforcement career as a reserve duty with the Yuba County Sheriff's Office on April 13th, 1992, and was hired as a police officer by the City of Yuba City on November 3rd, 2007. Dennis held the positions of police officer, police sergeant, and traffic sergeant, including duties as a field training officer, hostage negotiator, and cadet program supervisor. He received the following awards during his career: three Chiefs Unit of the Year, three individual commendation awards, the Police Unit Commendation Ribbon, four Police Fitness Awards, and the 2010 Chief's Spirit Award. When he was at the Marysville Police Department, he received the Medal of Valor and was the 2002 Officer of the Year. Whereas Sergeant Dennis Hauck kept faith with the public, he so honorably served for more than 31 years. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Sergeant Dennis Hauck. On the occasion of his honorable retirement, July 14th, 2023, we wish Sergeant Hauck the very best in his future. Let's give him a hand. You got a few words to say?
Just a few. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Especially, I want to thank my wife, my kids, and my in-laws for all the missed birthdays and holidays over the years, and I want to thank the men and women that I worked with. Yuba City is an awesome department, great men and women, great leadership under Chief Baker, and mostly the citizens of Yuba City. Thank you for a long and enjoyable career.
Thank you. Did you want to, who's doing the photography tonight? Anyone?
Hey, bro.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. At this point, I would like to invite Laura Nichols.
Laura Nichols is representing Senator Nilo and Assemblyman Gallagher.
On behalf of Senator Nilo, Assemblyman Gallagher, and also having known you personally for a very long time, we really want to congratulate you, commend you, thank you for everything you have done for the community in keeping us safe, keeping us together, and not knowing how much you have done for us. So, we congratulate you and thank you.
At this point, I'd like to ask David Morgan from Congressman Lamoff's office to please come forward.
It's my honor to present you, Sergeant Hauck, with a special congressional certificate of recognition, recognizing your 31 years of public service for not only Yuba City, but for our community down here. We appreciate your dedication and everything that you have done. So, thank you very, very much, and from the people of First District, we appreciate it, and we wish you all the best in retirement.
At this point, I'd like the Yuba City PD come down for a picture. Can we do that?
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, ceremonial presentation is number two. July is Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Coordinator of Service Director Brad McIntyre and the following members of our park and recreation staff to come forward. Alan, excuse me, Ann Gillen, is that right? Donald Crawford, now I'm going to say this wrong. Is it Hilario? Hilario? Jessica Chichi? Justin, don't you, Justin? I'm sorry. And it's Maddie Laffer? Raphael Mendoza and Robert Morales. So, this is, July is Park and Recreation Month. First of all, folks, thanks for all the hard work you do, adding to the city's quality of life. It is noticed. So, thank you for that. July is Parks and Recreation Month, whereas park and recreation makes lives and communities better now and in the future, and our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community. And the City of Yuba City and visitors benefit from a wide range of parks and recreation programs, including Blackburn Tally Sports Complex, Gauche Aquatic Park, Feather River Parkway, San Brandon Pickleball slash Tennis Courts, the Senior Center, which I know a lot of folks really appreciate that, and the youth and adult sports provided by the City of Yuba City. Whereas, the city council urges all of its residents to recognize that park and recreation enriches the lives of its residents and as well as adding value to the communities, homes, and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council of the City of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim July 2023 as Parks participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the and Recreation Month, and in doing so, ask that its citizens of the City of Yuba City consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public opinion, use, use of, and enjoy its parks, trails, open spaces, facilities, and recreation opportunities. excuse me, public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, Let's give them a hand. including items not listed in the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment Does, does anybody want to speak? Do I have any takers? Brad? is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes per comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? Any public comments? Okay. Seeing none. Consent calendar. Are we going to have enough to go? Okay. Consent calendar. All matters under consent calendar are considered
He'll be, he'll be.
Did I say it all? Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussions on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Item 13 will be continued to the regular meeting on August 15th.
Correction, item 13 will be heard separately.
Okay. Item 13 will be heard separately. Do we have any comments from the public on consent calendar items 4 through 12 and 14 through 15? Any public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring the matter back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar items 4 through 12 and 14 and 15.
A second? I've got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden and a second from Councilmember Pescuali. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. So, we will begin with consent calendar item 13. Business item. Business item. Yuba City Land Maintenance District 1, Stabler Lane and Garden Highway Area Resolution of Intent, presented by Josh Wolfe, Associate Engineer.
The mayor?
Yes.
If we may, could I suggest trailing this item until Councilmember Shaw comes so that we can have more people due to the recusals?
Okay.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Josh.
Sorry about that, Josh. So, moving right along, we'll move to business item 16. Consideration of Inclusion of Delinquent Charges and Penalties for Water and Wastewater Services on Secured Tax Roll. This is presented by Katrina Woods, Customer Service Manager.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Before you for consideration this evening is the delinquent account listing for water and wastewater services to be placed on the secured property tax roll. It would be in the attachments of your agenda. I don't have a PowerPoint. As background, in 2016, council adopted a municipal code update that allows for unpaid accounts to be included on the property tax bill as an additional effort to resolve the unpaid balances on accounts. This tool is used in addition to many billing efforts, some of which include monthly billing notices to all parties associated with a bill, associated with the bill, including tenants, property owners, and property management companies, demand letters, and collection letters sent to bill holders and owners, and the state intercept program. We intercept tax refund monies to go towards delinquent debts. In recent years, we've expanded our efforts to include balance payoffs through escrow companies. We work closely with local title companies to get information at closing and get those balances paid as well. As of today, we've reduced our list down to just over $13,000 for about 18 accounts, and staff recommends upon completion of this public hearing that council adopt a resolution for inclusion of the delinquent charges for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and the direct, and direct that a lien be placed on the properties.
Okay. The public hearing for consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on secured tax rolls is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Quite a bunch tonight. Okay, seeing none. Hearing no public comment, I am now closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Mayor, I motion that we consider the inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater service secured tax roll, conduct the public hearing, and gather consideration, adopt a resolution for the inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes, directing the lien of also be placed on subject properties.
I hear a motion from Councilmember Pescuali.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Business item 17, burned and damaged building abatement, presented by Ben Moody, Public Work Director and Development Services Director. Oh, I'm sorry, Doug. Presented by Doug Libby.
I was going to say, mayor, the role of Ben Moody tonight will be played by Doug Libby, Deputy Development Services Director. So, thank you and good evening, council members. So, this item is just a presentation before you and to take questions, should you have any? So, the purpose of this item is to outline existing processes, potential alternatives to the abatement of burned and damaged buildings. As you know, the city receives complaints from citizens who live proximate to these buildings and are impacted by aesthetics of fire damaged structures and unauthorized persons occupying or being present on site. The city is often also impacted due to increased calls for service to these, including for police, fire department, code enforcement, and public works. You'll probably recognize the picture that is up currently. That's of 773 Rockhold Way. I am happy to report, though, that, and this is just probably northeasterly of the post office on Pluma Street. And so, I'm happy to report that after talking with the property owner, that we anticipate that this site being cleared probably next month. So, going down memory lane, the city council updated the municipal code and adopted a new public nuisance ordinance back in September of 2020, and established a process for abatement of burned and damaged buildings. It's located in Chapter 8, Article 6 of our municipal code. As part of the requirements, the city manager or designee may issue an order for a property owner to submit a vacant building plan within 30 days of service. The city may require an order to contain plan that actively monitors, maintains, secures a property, and to either occupy, sell, lease, or demolish a building within 180 days or such other time as determined reasonable under the circumstances. And I would draw your attention to the code where it says "or such other time." So, although the code says 180 days or six months, it can be less. Now, an approved vacant building plan is valid for no more than 180 calendar days, and if expired without resolution, the property owner is automatically required to seek approval of a new plan. Now, failure to submit that updated plan, or a plan to begin with, is subject then to abatement proceedings, which I'm going to go through in more detail now. And generally, jurisdictions have three options to pursue under these circumstances. First option is traditional code enforcement. Think you're all familiar with it. The process involves conducting inspections, issuing notices, and issuing citations. The problem with this option is it can be very challenging due to the time required to go through the process, which can be frustrating to neighbors. It also may not result in the desired outcome because sometimes the property owner isn't motivated by citations and the fines that get imposed. The city can subsequently pursue an abatement warrant through the court, and the city would have to initially pay the cost to abate a property. Now, if the city's costs incurred may be collected through a collection agency, judicial action, special assessment, or property lien. Now, if a property lien is imposed and not satisfied within three years, the city may pursue foreclosure proceedings on that property. And if we don't, then it might be several years we have to wait for that property to change hands. Option two, demolition and cost recovery. It's a more direct option. City pursues an inspection warrant from the court to document deficiencies and other violations. If timely repairs aren't made, the city can pursue an abatement warrant through the court to remove the burned damaged structure and other debris. Similar to option one, the same means of cost recovery are available. Now, option three is receivership. Under this option, the city documents its efforts to address blighted property and the property owner's failure to bring a property into compliance. The city can request a court-appointed receiver, who is an attorney, who will take responsibility to rehabilitate the property, correct violations, and sell the affected property. Now, once sold, the city, any city liens that it has imposed can be satisfied. Now, a challenge with this option is that a property having little value or equity is unlikely to have a receiver because there's little opportunity for the cost to be recouped and a profit for the receiver to be had. Challenges we see in abating these situations. First, property owner motivation. Sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. Utility company delays removing infrastructure prior to demolition. This can take months. And I would draw your attention back to the first picture I showed at 773 Rockhold. That was part of the most recent issues at this property, is that they were waiting for PG&E to remove the gas pipe infrastructure so then they could proceed with demolition. And I think they said it took over two and a half months for that to actually occur. Is there property insurance, and is it sufficient to cover costs? I think that's drives home for all of us to, you know, to review our property insurance annually to make sure that we have the coverage that we need. Delays resulting from the insurance adjuster process and what is covered, there can be a lot of back and forth that occurs between a property owner and the adjuster. And sometimes, as you can imagine, during the wildfire events that we've experienced in this state, adjusters can be very busy. Availability of design professionals to prepare plans Now, once sold, the city, any city liens that it has imposed can be satisfied. Now, a challenge with this option is that a property having little value or equity is unlikely to have a receiver because there's little opportunity for the cost to be recouped and a profit for the receiver to be had. Challenges we see in abating these situations. First, property owner motivation. Sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. Utility company delays removing infrastructure prior to demolition. This can take months. And I would draw your attention back to the first picture I showed at 773 Rockhold. That was part of the most recent issues at this property, is that they were waiting for PG&E to remove the gas pipe infrastructure so then they could proceed with demolition. And I think they said it took over two and a half months for that to actually occur. Is there property insurance, and is it sufficient to cover costs? I think that's drives home for all of us to, you know, to review our property insurance annually to make sure that we have the coverage that we need. Delays resulting from the insurance adjuster process and what is covered, there can be a lot of back and forth that occurs between a property owner and the adjuster. And sometimes, as you can imagine, during the wildfire events that we've experienced in this state, adjusters can be very busy. Availability of design professionals to prepare plans and time needed to go through the permitting I would say today, design professionals are still, engineers, architects are still very busy. And if someone calls them up, they're gonna be waiting for a period of time to have the work start. And finally, availability of contractors to perform the work. If I was standing before you probably a year ago, I would have added supply chain issues to this, but those have largely worked themselves through. So, process improvements. Traditionally, code enforcement hasn't always been brought into the process. However, staff is working to improve internal communication between departments. Historically, when code enforcement has gotten involved, option one, the traditional code enforcement process has been used with, I'll just say, mixed success. Now, with the potential long-term impacts on neighborhoods, staff recently began requiring vacant building plans with each new burned damaged building incident to help minimize the timelines and property blight. Now, to go through some of the cases we've seen recently, 1481 Hayne Avenue, fire occurred in April of last year. Following the fire, law enforcement calls received due to break-ins, unauthorized people living in the building. Demo permits were pulled in this last February, and the property was cleaned as of March 24th of this year. Here's one that's received more attention, I think, than some, is 1335 Honor Oak, and I believe that would be Councilman Baumgarten's district. Fires occurred in February of last year and March of this year. Code enforcement became involved March of this year. Happy to report that the property was sold, closed, I think at the very end of June. We issued a demolition permit last week, so July 11th. And as of yesterday, the building was demolished, and they're gonna begin, and they're working on the cleanup. Now, the estimated cost, it was approximately $45,000. We did contact the property owner, and they were willing to divulge that information. You know, a new property, the new property owner is working to submit a building permit application shortly, so we're anticipating one based on their information in the coming weeks, so we're happy to see that. I would probably preface that the $45,000 paid is probably, you know, on the low side. If we were having to abate a property, I would say that when you, if you factored in the legal cost to get to that point, plus the, the cost of abatement, and if we had to do any testing, asbestos or otherwise, I think, you know, if the city abated something, probably looking at around $100,000, possibly north of that. Another site is 1530 Terrebonne Road. Fire occurred in April of this year, almost lightning speed, April 20th. A permit to repair the building was issued, and repairs are currently in process. So, staff's recommendation is, thank you for receiving my presentation. If council desires the city to abate specific properties going forward, we recommend council consider additional funding appropriations through a future budget cycle to help account for property cleanup and additional cost. And if council desires to abate specific properties, we recommend option number two that we went through, due to the more direct and streamlined approach. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. We also have members of our fire team here tonight, as well as code enforcement, in case there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments on this item? Hey, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes?
Mr. Libby, the times I've been involved with, in recent years with fire abatements, it's a specialized C license to do that. Am I not correct with that? A general contractor cannot go in and just do the abatement of a fire, a burned up building. Because I've come across it in Nevada County.
I would have to double-check that.
I'll be happy to comment. Thanks for bringing up Honor Oak Lane, because I think that is one that while there are some excellent examples up there, this, this particular property, I believe, represents probably where you're gonna get, where we are going to get most of our problems, which is the absentee owner, who is not motivated to reoccupy the house, and therefore chooses to either ignore and/or delay getting the, the structure removed. In this case, this, this took 16 months before the, the structure was demolished. In the meantime, there was somewhere north of 19 calls made to the police department for, for trespassing or homeless folks inhabiting the structure. And there was a comedy of different things that, that happened that unfortunately impacted the neighborhood. So, I applaud the effort of you and your code enforcement team in getting this one taken care of. I recognize there was a lot of things that, that could have happened, they didn't, but it, it serves as the, I think, the springboard for where we are at tonight. I'm concerned on 180 days, that's six months where a piece of property could sit in, in disrepair. And given what's going on in our community and many other communities, these become quite attractive nuisances, where all kinds of stuff, mostly illegal, if not all illegal, are occurring, despite the fact that we require them to secure the property. You know, temporary fencing is, is just that, it's temporary, and people can engage. I'm, I'm interested in hearing, and maybe, Mr. Libby, you can tell us, or maybe, Mr. Chaffin's gonna have to tell us, you know, how fast can we actually move if we run into a situation where it's not an owner occupied, motivated inhabitant, that we, we kind of feel, if you will, is going to be one of these long drawn out situations like Rockhold is? And it's my understanding, we got about 11 of these in the city right now. What's the fast track answer to that? I know people have property rights, but it, it's important, I think, that we figure out a way to get this done a heck of a lot more quickly than, than six months, if we can.
Yeah, I think that if the, if the city were to employ option two that we reviewed, that would definitely be a much more quick process. And then I would defer to the city attorney for the timeframes for the legal process.
Thank you so much. Yes, your fastest option is option two. It would require us to go in and get a, an inspection warrant, and it's usually for circumstances involving immediate or imminent threats to public health and safety posed by the structure. Once you go in and do that, and the city gets the inspection warrant, then you can go back and based on the inspection, get an abatement warrant. And then you can, once that abatement warrant is there, you can basically go out and clean up and demolish the building almost immediately to remove the public health and safety issue. That is fast. On the flip side, it's slow to recover your costs. So, it will involve a greater expense to the city upfront for your abatement, but recovery of costs can take three years or more. And that is where the, the slowdown or the hiccup arises using that particular process.
I, yeah, and I know that it's gonna, you made the comment, Mr. Libby, that it could be upwards of $100,000 to, for us to engage with another company to, to demolish the building. I, I don't know how you quantify 19 police responses, you know, neighborhoods who are looking to the city for, hey, man, fix this thing in my neighborhood, please. So, I'm, I'm obviously very cognizant of the cost, however, there's a sort of a straight-faced thing to me, which is, we gotta take care of this stuff, employing whatever means we have at our disposal so that we don't impact our neighborhood. Some of our neighborhoods are already looking kind of, I mean, there's issues, but to layer on an abandoned, half burnt house that's attracting all kinds of other stuff, maybe even numerous fires, it, it does, it, it's not what we want in our, it's not what I'd like to see in our city. So, I mean, I, I look to you folks too up here to, to weigh in on this, but this, this situation is one where sometimes we get rapid, but sometimes we don't.
Through the mayor. One second. I would like to state for the record that it's 6:26. Councilman Shaw, rejoin the group.
Thank you. Yeah, no, Councilman Baumgarten's comment is spot on. I was subject to that very thing at the end of my street on Brown and my district on Franklin, that I think the chief has got a picture of that fire where there were fatalities, and it's been two years. And it's just sat and sat and sat, and finally, it was repurchased from someone else, and it was absentee. People all moved away. It was the Noreen family. So, yeah, no, 19 calls is not a cheap thing for the police to keep coming back to. And just, just the degradation of the neighborhood and, and what goes on in those facilities, I think, we, we have to take it on the chin and, and move as fast as we possibly can.
Through the mayor. First of all, Mr. Libby, sorry for walking in midstream. I apologize. I got back as quick as I can, and if anyone sees me on this tonight, I'm waiting for some texts to come in in regards to some medical stuff, so that's what's going on up here. I want to go back to something that you said earlier, because this is a problem throughout the city, and you referenced the health and safety codes. And we did an ordinance about a year ago for blighted properties because of health and safety codes. So, could we not, and we're not talking about the, like you said, the motivated people, the owner occupied, they're just trying to get it fixed, and they're subject to contractors and supply stuff. We're talking about the people that are just gonna let it go forever until their hand is forced. Can we not use those mechanisms already to give code enforcement the teeth to start down this avenue, to get them more motivated? Because we did have success with buildings, and, you know, the old Harpers Ferry was one, that was kind of the poster child for that. Trash everywhere, graffiti everywhere, and all it was, was a reach out by Mr. Moody, I believe, and you, you and your team talked to them, and all of a sudden, they started, you know, they really wanted help, and we offered help, but we have fines and stuff in that ordinance already. So, is that a lever that we can pull?
So, thank you, Doug. I definitely, good questions, and I'll answer, provide a little more input with the public works hat on, too. So, yes, so, there was three, three processes. The code enforcement, so you set up the vacant building plan, then you start beating them up, hey, you're out of compliance, here's your 250 bucks, here's your, you're out of compliance, $500 a day. Boom, boom, boom. You get to a certain level where you've built up 50,000 bucks, whatever level you want to set, and then you, you talk with the attorney. We set up and we go to a property lien. But then the property lien plays out for three years before you could go into foreclosure. So, you wait, so that turns into four years, and then when you go foreclosure, guess what? Now, the city owns it. And so, now I need about 100 grand so I could clean it if there's no hazardous situation, and then sell it. And so, and then there's no recovery option, really, because there's no value in the property until something's built, and then you have long-term property taxes. Or the lien isn't so upside down, because if I got $200,000 into an upside down property, it's never gonna sell. So, then you gotta wipe away the, the code enforcement value to get it. So, that's the problem with the traditional code enforcement process. The option two, where you go in there, it's imminent, it's a safety hazard, there's still 180 days sounds long, which is painful for me to say, because six months is a long time for somebody getting 19 calls across the street for vandalism, blight, homelessness, going in and out of it, you, you name it. But there's definitely legal precedent, we have to set up some, some processes where you'd have to give the guy non-notice, the property on notice, go through the process. So, I definitely hear the 180 days. I, I think in reality, that tool is set up for 180 days where you'd have to go through the notice. We'd have to work with the attorney to, to show unresponsiveness and then have it as an immediate threat, and then work through that. But then it turns into a public works project where we need to test it and abate it. And so, I think fastest you're gonna see something happen is really 18 months on a city process, and you need to be, the city needs to be willing to take on that, that burden that's not gonna get paid off for quite some time. And so, I just wanted to add that comment to it, and then, and that's where I think it's definitely a valid conversation, and then how we prioritize those properties and look at putting funding at it next year through the budget cycle, that, hey, if there's some priority ones out there, you know, Second Street, Monroe Avenue, some of these are just the ongoing, as you said, that are, just the quality of life. It comes to the city and the impacts it has, or how do we, how do we quantify that and then put those efforts into those so we can handle them? Because with, with these properties, there's more of them coming. The fire department talked about, there's about two burns a month that are happening, and so, how, how do we stay up on them? And so, that's with the current effort to now jump on those, instead of being complaint-driven and let them sit for a year before, you know, or, and not go to the vacant building plan, just deal with individual items. With this last Honor Oak, it really came to our attention that internal communication, it's, it's when we hear those, then that's the time to step up and get that vacant plan going right away, because then we then have the option to go down one of these options, one, two, three, at the 180 days or sooner, once we start it, instead of waiting a year, then going down the 180 days.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, Doug. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Moody. My, my question wasn't one or the other. My question was basically an "and." I don't think we should wait 180 days before we do anything, because it seems like us as a city could be proactive in a little bit of, you know, their chief knows that House 123 on Elm Street burnt down. It seems like we as a city could possibly, if they haven't contacted us within 30 or 45 days, then we're trying to start that vacant property process and making them aware of it. But if they are an out-of-town owner, and they're just ignoring everything, not doing things, then code enforcement could start with what we've already have as a health and safety before that 180 days ever hits here, to try to get them motivated. The last thing we want's the property. I don't want the property as a city. I don't want the property as a person, you know? It's, we want them to take care of it and keep our city nice and beautiful and a place people want to be. We just need to get them motivated. So, my, my comment and my question was, can't we run these parallel, Mr. Chaffin? Can, or do they cross over and cause issues legally if you're running one course with fines for health and safety, and then you're down this 180-day option two?
You can switch from one train track to the other. You can switch from...
Not on. Thank you.
You can switch from one train track to the other. So, it is possible. The thing about it is, is if, for example, you're requiring a vacant building plan, and they're still under that plan, it's really hard to then turn around and run in and get an inspection warrant and an abatement warrant when they're already under a plan. So, you really, the, there are opportunities for crossover, but really, it's, it's more like train tracks. Pick one, and then you can switch over at certain points to go the other one if you're not getting compliance.
Yeah, and I guess on that train track is, now, when we receive the burn notice, so an email gets distributed, code enforcement picks that up in the next day's email, we initiate the request for a vacant building plan. And so, that's really the third, they have 30 days to then get us a plan of what's gonna happen for the next 180 days. And then, then through that 180 days, hey, I'm gonna call insurance, or we're still trying to figure out who the owner is, and everyone's, I, I mean, these guys have stories of just how complicated some of the property ownership and how the insurance plays out, they're a little bit different. And so, they, they would be responsible for us to, then we're gonna jump on it early to establish that, and then within that 180 days, they need to start following the plan, based on the existing municipal code you, you've guys put in place.
Right. And, and not trying to hug the mic here, guys, I apologize, but thinking this whole thing through, it thinks like we should, we should know statistically what the norm is with what's going on. So, it might be 60 days, it might be 90 days, it might be 30 days, but we have that contact with the owner. What came to mind is using the words that Ronald Reagan said, where it's the scariest thing on earth, we're here from the government and we're here to help, you know? It's almost that, but honestly, we don't want to hinder them, we want to help them. But you're gonna find out really quick if you've got, you know, obstacles faced, or you've got, you know, someone that just doesn't give a rip. And that gets us on whichever track we need to be on. My last thought as I was going through this was, it seems like with these numbers, maybe we could come up with a certain number that's like, you know what, we're comfortable with this much to take care of our city. We're comfortable with this much to take care of our city. But anything above that has to come back before the council for, you know, going down that other train track. You know, if it's going to cost 80,000, okay, or 45,000, it's going to cost a half a million, that's a whole nother, a whole nother discussion.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, I'm huge on property rights. I think people have the opportunity and should have the opportunity to maintain their property rights. However, when they begin to infringe on other properties nearby, then that's where I get deeply concerned. And so I'm wondering, I keep hearing 180 days. I know that's the existing number. Did we, at some point in time, just grab that number out of the air? Is there a chance for us to do something quicker than that for that train track?
Based on what I've seen in other jurisdictions, 180 days is not uncommon. The challenge we have is you have to provide a reasonable period of time for them to abate and to go through the process. So if we were to do, say, a shorter time, like 90 days, the question would be, well, have we given a reasonable time in order to do that? Because if it really is that dangerous, you should be running in and saying, this is so dangerous, we need to abate it now, versus giving them 90 days. It's finding that balance between reasonable period of time and danger. And if it's good enough to go 90 days, a court's likely to look at it and say, well, you should have given them an additional 90 days, because insurance companies can be difficult, et cetera, et cetera. Can you shorten that time? Yes. But when you do, it becomes more and more difficult as a practical matter to enforce, because we have to go to the courts in order to do some stuff.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, the one track that allows us to designate it as, you know, an imminent hazard, we can go. I mean, if, okay. The other thing is, is I think there should be, you know, part of this equation is the burden that it places on our code enforcement department. I mean, having to deal with this, and, you know, they're busy enough and taking care of a lot of different things. And this is one that I would love to see us, you know, expedite and give them the teeth and the tools to get this off of their plate, if you will, so that they can get on to other stuff as well. Because we all know there's a lot of stuff out there right now. So anything that we, as a council, can do or provide staff, I think, you know, options to take care of these situations, which seem to be occurring more frequently, I think, is well worth the time and energy spent to figure that out.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank staff for putting the time in this. I know it is a public safety issue, considering the property off of Pluma Street. It didn't burn once. It burnt twice. And so it is a public safety issue, so thank you for that. And I'll bring it matter back to council for action.
Through the mayor, I think it was just, Mr. Libby, do you have, did you have enough from us that, or do you need more from us tonight to give you direction?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Through the mayor, I do have a couple of questions. Because the staff is navigating this process, of course, then we'll be utilizing city funds to do so. And so we just adopted a budget. You all are aware of the budget situation. And this would come out of the general fund typically, because we don't have any other funding sources available for this. And so as staff is navigating through this process, we will need to come forward with a request for a CIP account to establish funding for abatement processes. And so, you know, given Mr. Libby, you know, contacted the property owner for Honor Oak, and that was $45,000, that didn't include what the city's legal costs would be, or testing, or abatement. It would be helpful to get a sense from council as to, you know, the amount of funding that you would like to see set aside in this fund, so that we can get a sense of, because that's also going to dictate how aggressive we can be on some of these properties. As Councilmember Baumgartner noted, there are 11 burn structures, but there are also quite several vacant red-tagged structures that might be in a little bit different situation. So we do need some additional direction. We talked about the burned, but we didn't talk about the vacant red-tagged. And then we don't know the amount that council wants to put towards this effort.
Through the mayor, I think that's a great question. I think what I would like to hear before I would advise any dollar figure is, for instance, let's just use the 11 that we know, how many of those do we think typically are going to be problem, problem structures? I mean, I don't know what that number is. My reference would go back too many years. But maybe we could get something from staff in regards to how many might be, you know, yellow light. These folks don't seem to be coming forward with the vacant building plan, or when we talk to them, they don't sound, I know they can say all kinds of different things, but would that be possible for us to get sort of an idea of what that might be?
Yes, we could certainly obtain that information.
I would feel a little bit more comfortable saying, hey, look, you know, on an annual basis, there might be X amount of these things that we're going to have to deal with, and then hopefully, we don't have to deal with any of them.
Through the mayor.
We're kind of making assumptions here that a 4,500-square-foot home in a good neighborhood is going to sit blight, in which I don't think that's the case. Most of the things that I've seen that are blight are normally the cracker box, little thousand-square-feet, 1,500-square-feet homes in, unfortunately, my district. And I don't, I think we're seeing, to abate $100,000 on a home, this is a pretty good-sized home, that's normally going to be in a fairly substantial neighbors, neighborhood and such. So I think we kind of have to get a picture of what actually is sitting idle in a city, and not just make, you know, a blanket that all these homes that burn are going to be, am I making any sense?
No, you make any sense.
Okay. So.
I would note that there, we didn't, we didn't call out addresses, but we, as part of the staff report, there was a map included, which identified locations of either the red-tagged structures or the burned ones. So you could see approximately where in the city they are. Okay.
Are you still looking for a dollar amount?
What I'm hearing from council is we need to follow up at the next council meeting that perhaps provides an inventory of the burned structures, the abandoned structures, maybe a status of where we are in discussions with the property owners, and then an estimate of what it may potentially cost if the city needs to get involved. And so that's the direction I heard from council. If you have something different, please let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. At this point, I think we're going to circle back to item number 13. Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District 1, Stabler Lane slash Garden Highway. Resolution of intent presented by Josh Wolfe.
Mr. Mayor, before we start the presentation this evening, I believe that there may be some recusals that have to be announced out.
Okay.
Through the mayor. I must recuse myself from this, as I live in the area that we are going to be discussing in item 13.
All right.
Through the mayor, I have property in the district that we are going to be discussing, so I have to recuse myself.
Now, we have a very unique situation here, is generally when you don't have a quorum, and there's one person meeting, you would normally continue the meeting to allow there to be a quorum, so you can proceed forward, because obviously, you can't do business with only two council members. However, under state law, there are certain requirements as to when this particular type of district levy has to be imposed, and the result submitted to the county. And even though staff started well in advance, it turns out because of the meeting dates and times and the absences, we will not be able to meet the state mandatory requirements unless we have an initiation of a hearing this evening. So my advice is, under these circumstances, because Councilmember Harris is absent tonight, that we go through the random process of flipping a coin between Councilmember Baumgartner and Councilmember Pasquale, to see who will be sitting as a quorum or sitting on the council to make a decision on this matter, in order to make sure there is at least a quorum. So Ms. Wakefield, would you be willing to do the coin toss, or if someone will select it? In which case, Councilmember Pasquale will be remaining, and Councilmember Baumgartner will be leaving. Thank you so much.
Hey, Mr. Wolfe, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I apologize with this one originally being consent. I don't have a presentation, but I will do a quick run-through on this. So the purpose of this item is for the resolution of intent and approving the engineer's report for Landscape Maintenance District Number 1. Now, Maintenance District Number 1 covers two areas, or Maintenance District Number 1 is primarily in the Walton area and down south by Garden Highway. It has four zones of benefit. 1A, which is the Walton area, which has no cost of living adjustment. 1B, which is the Garden Highway area, that's a gateway into the city, also has no cost of living adjustment. And then there are a couple of commercial districts down by the Garden Highway area, which have been created recently, that do have cost of living adjustments factored into their analysis. So, I apologize. In previous years, the expenditures in District 1 exceeded revenue due to increasing costs and lack of COLA provisions, creating negative reserve fund balances with recent aggressive cost-cutting measures that have reduced professional services, water and administration expenses. The revenues have exceeded expenditures in District 1. The city also previously attempted to modify District 1 to include COLA provisions, but the residents within the district opposed the modification. In order to restore the higher maintenance levels, additional funding sources, and/or Proposition 218 hearing process would need to be approved. The engineer's annual report has been prepared, and it's on file in the city clerk's office. The report describes the district, the improvements therein, the method of assessment, and the proposed assessments for each parcel. The resolution approving the annual report and the resolution of intention to order improvements are required by state law to continue the district. The proposed action in this report sets the public hearing for the council meeting to be held on August 15, 2023, to establish assessments for the coming year. In terms of the fiscal impact, as previously stated, Zones 1A and 1B do not have cost of living adjustments. In general, the revenue expected for District 1A is $22,000, or $22,007. The expenditures projected are $18,609, and the projected reserve balance as of July 1, 2024 is $79. For District 1, Zone of Benefit B, the revenue projected is $66,315. The expenditures are projected to be $65,186, and the projected reserve balance is $13,952. The reserve balance in Zone B consists of general fund transfers that were unspent in previous years. Staff recommends maintaining the reserve balance to cover unforeseen expenses that may come up throughout the year. Moving forward, the city may be required to reduce maintenance in levels in District Number 1, or utilize general fund gateway maintenance transfer funds to maintain previous levels of service. So staff's recommendation is to adopt the following resolutions to continue the maintenance district pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. One, approving the engineer's report for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number 1. And two, the resolution of intention to order improvements for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number 1. And then finally, setting a public hearing for August 15 at 6:00 p.m. to establish assessments for fiscal year 2324. That's my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. Do we have any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District 1, and adopt a resolution of intention of order improvements for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number 1, both pursuant to Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Shaw.
Councilmember Shaw, does that include setting a public hearing for August 15, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. to establish assessments for...
That's such a novel idea.
202324. Take that as a yes. Thank you.
That would be a yes.
And that would be a second. And a second from Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Welcome back. Item 18, Pluma Street Improvements Water Tower Painting and Lighting Award Construction Contract, presented by, once again, Josh Wolfe.
Thank you, Mayor. This next item, I am excited to present to you for the Pluma Street Water Tower Painting and Lighting Services. This one should be a little bit more entertaining than the last one. So as a background for this one, in January 2022, Public Works applied for the Clean California Local Grant Program to secure funding to complete multiple improvements across Pluma Street, the downtown district, and Center Street as well. In March of 2022, the city was awarded $2.2 million in grant funding from said program. In September 15 of 2022, city staff issued a request for proposals for design services for the entire project scope. So there really are four or so components to this project. So on the top left, you will see the water tower painting and lighting. Also included in that would be the abatement services for lead and hazardous materials. That portion was just completed in the end of June. So the next process will be tonight's item, which is painting and lighting. The next phase of the project would be the Center Street lighting, in which we'd be installing poles and Festoon-style lighting across Center Street. Then would come the last two items, the Water Tower Park, which is currently in design, and the Gateway Arch. So as previously stated, the current scope of work is the repainting of the water tower, logo installation, and then an LED uplighting retrofit. The city has done numerous RFPs since 2008, really since the reconstruction of Pluma Street, to have the water tower repainted. The issue along the process has been that only certain contractors can do the work on the water tower due to be, due to the working at heights restrictions. Also, we've had budget constraints in securing funding for the project. Now that we have funding through the grant process, we recommend that we would go with YesGo Lighting LLC. We've, through the multiple RFPs we've done over the years, they've been one of the only bidders that's been responsive. They have a great reputation in similar types of work. And we've already spoken with Caltrans and more or less gotten their blessing to do a sole source based on the amount of RFPs we've done in the past and the lack of available contractors to do the work. So in terms of the water tower design, city staff wanted to coordinate with Downtown Business Association to make sure that we're getting their input on this water tower as well. So three main components for the water tower's design. First, the logo design, which is where we had the most interaction with the Downtown Business Association, and I'll show some of those logos in a minute. Second would be the orientation. Currently, the orientation of the logos are facing north and facing due south. So in looking at the current orientation, if you're on the north end of Pluma Street, and you're trying to find the water tower, it's very difficult because of all the tree coverage. So placing a logo due north again... So, placing a logo due north again might not be best for visibility. South side, Pluma's Boulevard, it's pretty decently seen. In review, staff drove around the water tower to kind of find the spots with the most visibility. And what staff determined was the Bridge Street corridor will have a high amount of traffic, and then coming off of the Bridge Street, or the Fifth Street Bridge, seeing the water tower, that would be, those locations would be spots with the highest visibility. So, in terms of orientation, we're recommending placing one logo northeast, splitting the difference between the Fifth and Tenth Streets bridges, and then the other logo would be facing southwest towards Cooper Avenue and Bridge Street. And then, in terms of quantity, staff viewed the idea of having more than two logos. After review, we determined that any more than two logos may be a bit cumbersome and wouldn't be the best for the water tower. And additional costs would be incurred through the additional logos and additional lighting needed. So, back to the logo design. Through working with Yescow, they were able to come up with four different designs. In working with the Downtown Business Association, we were able to narrow the logos down to two options. The top left, which has the Yuba City standard duck logo with the word downtown below it curving up towards the logo, and then the bottom right, which is just the Yuba City duck logo. So, logo option number one, this was the DBA's preference. One of the things that the city likes about it, as well as the DBA, is it does help define where the Downtown District is, and it is sort of a placemaking beacon for the Downtown. Logo option number two would be the one with just the city logo on it. The positives to just having the city logo would be, the logo itself would be larger, so it might be more visible at farther distances, and it's a little less busy than the other Before I move on to this point, staff is looking, or staff is happy to pursue either option, and is looking for council's recommendation on which one to move forward with. In terms of fiscal impact, the contract amount for Yescow is $390,875.37. We're recommending a 10% contingency of $39,087.54. Any funds that are left over after this will revert back into the account that would go into future phases for the project. The available funding is through CIP Account Number 1268. The balance in that account is $2,345,735.83. At the end of every phase, or at the end of the project as a whole, anticipated for June 2024, city will seek reimbursement from Caltrans in the grant amount of $2,235.628. The alternatives would be to not award the contract to Yescow and issue another request for proposals. As previously stated, Yescow is one of the very few that can do the work, and this would delay the timeline for the project. What staff does recommend is adopting a resolution which awards a standard agreement to Yescow Signs LLC of Salt Lake City for the repainting, logo installation, lighting retrofit services on the Pluma Street Water Tower in the amount of their total bid, $390,875.37. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Do we have any public comments on this item?
There you go. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and City Manager Diana. I just want to thank you for your time for allowing me here today. I'm Sandy Drown, President of the Downtown Business Association. And so, as you know, our merchants in Downtown would love to see the first logo, which is Yuba City Downtown. It's in our front yard. It makes sense for that to be there. So, we appreciate Josh working with us and kind of going around about on which preference we had. And so, we're excited about this project. This is a great project. My member one, Brad, called and asked if I could help submit a letter of our ideas from Downtown, what we thought, and it's full circle of all the four items that we had thought as a young DBA board that we could ambitiously do. And then we called Yescow and found out it was like $300,000, and then we realized that there's a different way. So, I'm glad that Brad was able to kind of lead this project. But we're excited, and hopefully the council will be able to decide on the right logo. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment on this item?
Is it on? Yeah. Oh, yes, okay. Hi, Mayor and Council, City Manager Diana. My name is Natalie Superson. I am a business owner downtown Yuba City on Pluma Street. My business is Natalie Superson Photography. I was not at the last board meeting, which was this month. This is the first time I've actually gotten to see the logos. This is super exciting, as are all the merchants downtown. I do like the first one also, so well done for what we voted on. It does, like Sandy mentioned, on behalf of what Sandy said, it does designate where we are, what's downtown. And coming over, I'm still, that bridge, it's not Bridge Street Bridge, it's the other one, coming west, I call it the 20, coming west on the 20. If you see that, and it says downtown, you know where to go. And it's like the place, and everybody, it's kind of one of those default things, it's like, if you go downtown, you're in the spot. Everything is there, food, shopping, entertainment, it's kind of a default. It's like, okay, let's go there. So, it's a really easy place to know where to go. So, I'm sure you guys will put in your ideas and thoughts, and we as a DBA are so happy that we are able to work with everybody else with the city, and you guys too, and Doug and team, and everybody else. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just had one more comment. I forgot to mention that as part of the lighting, it's not just going to be standard lighting to show the logo, it'll be multicolored changing. So, there are options. We could change colors as we see fit.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action and/or comment.
Through the mayor. Thanks for all the work that you guys have done with this, and it's going to be nice when it's finished. So, I want to start with there. I think we need to take a look back. Mark, we were talking earlier, how many years ago did the Downtown kind of come about and we redo the Downtown? Probably 20 years ago? Yeah. So, we have to really take a step back and go, what did our predecessors really want to do with Downtown 20 years ago? And I think you guys summed it up, and that is drive people to kind of an economic center of our city that's got entertainment, that's got dining, that's got shopping, that's got all of those. And there's a lot of towns we go to that will identify it. And I was able to attend virtually the meeting, and my personal opinion, I like number one because it still, it clarifies what town you're in. You're in Yuba City. But it also then sets that district. And, you know, for me, I think we just get on board with this and finish this project out, and go with number one, finish up the cross street there, it just got out of my brain, it starts with a C. Center Street, thank you. And get that archway in. And when you think about how Pluma Street is boxed in, we've got the flag on the north end, which people were all upset when it was broken, wasn't there? And it's there, and it flies and welcomes our citizens and our veterans and everything and our military. Then on the south end, you'll have the archway. And then, exactly what Natalie, you said, even now, if you kind of come over the Tenth Street Bridge there, you can see the water tower. So, it's just kind of a beacon of call. So, for myself, I think we need to get on board with this and do number one. I just don't like the color green, okay?
No taken.
So, I'm just joking. That would be my two cents, so I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in.
Through the mayor. I'm good with one. It's just, I'm grappling with where you're going to put the logo. I get the, you know, you really don't see it when you're coming from the north to the south, but you do when you're coming into the city. And it is, young lady, you said that you could see it from the Tenth Street Bridge, which you said the 20?
Yeah, I can view here still.
So, you've actually, that's something you see? So, I don't know, maybe the locations need to be southwest, or southeast, northeast orientation, or we could, I mean, is that what he said? Oh, good. There you have it.
You're thinking great, man.
Through the mayor. Well, I learned a new name for the Tenth Street Bridge. I probably won't get the 20, 20 Bridge out of my mind now. I've known the Tenth Street Bridge for 40 years. I get it, I get it.
I don't know, that's how I know it.
The 20, okay. I'm all in on design number one, and yeah, I don't need to say anymore.
Well, thank you for that presentation. This is exciting. I remember the first time we did this, and they were in neon, and the first time I saw it up there in neon, it was kind of, it was just cool to look at. And it hasn't looked presentable for a while, and so I'm glad this was done. You know, I kind of took it upon myself to go downtown, and it wasn't exactly scientific, but just ask people, you know, give them the two options, and it surprised me. And this was a pretty healthy cross-section between merchants and just the average person walking down the street, and what I was told was Downtown Yuba City. And so, I would go with option number one as well. I do have just one question on that, the picture, the rendition of the lighting structure on center. I'm assuming those are going to be high enough for trucks to go under?
Yeah. So, the design on those, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm almost positive we're specing that the poles are 22 feet tall, and the lights will be hanging no lower than 18 feet, so no issues with trucks.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, he's nodding his head, yeah. Okay, so at this point, it looks like we'll bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we award a professional service contract agreement. Duke, duke, where am I at? I just did the wrong one. Adopt a resolution which awards a standard agreement to Yescow Signs LLC of Salt Lake City, Utah, for the repainting, logo installation, and lighting retrofit services on Pluma Street Water Tower in the amount of their total bid of $398,7537.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to live in LA.
Okay, moving to item number 19, Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well Project Consultant Award presented by?
William Zhao.
Okay. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Greetings, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, city leadership and public in attendance today. Been a while since I've presented, so give me a little sec to warm up. But my name is William, I'm Assistant Engineer for the Public Works Department, and so today I'll be presenting on the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Well Project, also known as the ASR Well Project. So, some quick background, this project really gained traction when the California Department of Water Resources awarded the city a grant in the amount of $6,325,000 for both the design and construction of an aquifer storage and recovery well. For those of you who don't know, an ASR well is a well that's capable of not only extracting water from the ground, but also injecting it into the ground for future use. So, the city's goal for the project is to not only mitigate water shortages during times of drought, but also capture and store water when it's abundant. And so, right now, for the goals of the project is to have the ASR well have a production rate of roughly 2,400 acre-feet per year, which is roughly 20% of the city's demand for water, as well as having a solid, essentially, storage underground, and that amount would essentially be determined during the design phase. So, for the procurement process, the city did, the Public Works Department released an RFP, Request for Proposals, on April 20, where the city was seeking an experienced consultant that would be able to do the design, environmental services, permitting for the well, as well as some engineering services during construction. So, on May 25, the city received two proposals, and those two proposals were reviewed by a committee of four Public Works staff members. And so, you can see on the table here that the grading criteria for the proposals included the following. So, for the outcome, after the rankings were added up, Corolo of Sacramento was a top-ranked proposal, and some of the strengths that they had in their proposal included a nationally-awarded ASR well project, as well as exceptional permitting experience with the state for an ASR well. And they also demonstrated a great understanding of the city's needs, goals, existing plan issues, as well as the budgetary constraints around the project. And their team also included staff members that have previously worked on the ASR feasibility study for the city that was done back in 2010. More details about the impact of the project, so contract administration and review of related documents will be done by Public Works staff. On the right-hand side, you can see a table where there's a scope of services. Task 1 through 8 are given for the project, and then Corolo also provide optional tasks 9 through 12. So, due to limited public work staffing, optional task 9, which is for construction management inspection, will need to be provided for the project. However, staff will bring that to the City Council for a decision when construction's ready to begin. On optional task 10, that's for grant opportunity and research and writing, that's not needed at this time. And then the last two optional tasks, 11 and 12, are recommended by staff due to there being a lack of geotechnical information at the water treatment plant, as well as the need for integration of new electrical and instrumentation equipment to the complex water treatment plant system. So, dive into the fiscal impact of this design phase for the project. So, right now, the total cost is going to be about $2,799,412. And there's a breakdown where roughly $2.6 million would be the contract amount to Corolo. There would be a 5% design contingency, as well as a contract management markup, which is a 2%. So, the grant awarded $2.9 million for the design phase of the project, and with us being at 2.8, any savings for the design phase will be transferred over to the construction phase for the project. And staff is also going to be recommending that the council authorize the Finance Director to make the supplemental appropriations, so the city can be reimbursed in the future for the grant. So, today, staff is recommending council adopt a resolution that awards a professional services agreement to Corolo Sacramento in the amount of $2,613,030 for the development, basically, the design phase of the ASR well project. The second action would also be to authorize the city manager to execute a contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval as to legal form by the city. And lastly, also authorize the Finance Director to make the necessary supplemental appropriations, so we can be reimbursed for the grant funds. And if the council does not wish to proceed with the staff's recommendation, there's also these alternatives, which include directing staff to further evaluate the proposals. We could also reject the proposals and the council can provide direction to staff on issuing another RFP. Or we could even reject the proposals and postpone the signed services. However, if we do this, postponing the project would delay construction and ultimately create a situation of where the city might have to forfeit those awarded grant funds. But that's my, into my presentation, so I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or action.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt, as presented tonight, 19 A, B, and C.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Item number 20, Yuba City Residential Street Lighting Maintenance District, Walton Area and Terre Boina Area Public Hearing. And this is presented by Josh Wolfe.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council. This item before you tonight is for the Residential Street Light Maintenance Districts, Walton Area and Terre Boina Area. So, first, here's a map of the Terre Boina Area Residential Street Light Maintenance District, kind of south and north side of Butte House Road, between Royal Ranchero and Redding Avenue. Next one, we have the Walton Avenue Residential Street Light Maintenance District, which is the, let's see, it is the west side of Walton Avenue, from Bog Road north to about Michelle Drive. So, the city annually So the city annually levies and collects special assessments to power streetlights for the Walton Avenue and Terre Boina areas. The districts were formed under the county's jurisdiction and since the city's annexed the districts and has taken over administration. For a little bit more background, June 6th of this year, council ordered the engineer to file reports for the district. At the June 20th meeting, council adopted resolutions of intention to order the improvements and to set a public hearing for today, June 18th, to establish assessments for fiscal year 2324. The engineers' annual report has been prepared and are on file in the city clerk's office. Reports describe each district, improvements therein, method of assessment, and proposed assessment for each parcel. So the Terre Boina and Walton area districts do not have cost of living adjustments, so there haven't been any increases for the Walton Avenue area. The city proposes to continue charging maximum levy amounts due to the continually rising power, or, power costs. You could see here, the revenue for Terre Boina area is $23,491, expenditures $19,394, with a reserve balance of $126,870.70. Walton area revenue is $81,677, expenditures around $77,630, and the projected reserve is in the negative $22,044. Staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and then to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy assessments for fiscal year 2324 within Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District number one, Terre Boina area, and Residential Streetlight Maintenance District number one, Walton area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Wolfe. The public hearing for Uba City Residential Street Lighting Maintenance Districts Walton area and Terre Boina area, public hearing is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Mayor, I propose a motion to Uba City Residential Street Lighting Maintenance Districts Walton area and Terre Boina area, public hearing, conduct, conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2324 within Uba City Residential Streetlight Maintenance District one, Terre Boina, and Residential Streetlight Maintenance District number one, Walton area.
I've got a motion by council member Pasquale.
Second.
And a second from council member Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 21 is going to be continued on August 15th, moving to future agenda items, just an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public on this? Okay. Seeing none. Reports and communications, the following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information, no action will be taken on items under this section unless council agrees to it in a subsequent agenda. Item number 23, city manager's report.
Thank you, council. So I just want to commend Josh and William and Doug on their presentations tonight. It's always nice to see staff, in addition to Ben, do presentations, and it's, that's exciting to see. Also, I want to note that we do have one of the engineering interns in the audience tonight, so Wyatt Prather, so Wyatt, thank you for attending tonight. If Wyatt, if you could raise your hand so council can see who you are. The other thing that, the August 1st council meeting is canceled because we have National Night Out, so council will be participating in National Night Out and going on ride-alongs to various neighborhood events. And then the other thing that I want to note, something that I'm very excited about is Public Works, number one, they did a great job on a patch pave project on Gray Avenue at Spiva, as a particularly bad section of road, not that there's not a lot of bad, of bad sections of road right now, but they did a great job. And this week, they are gonna start on Butte House Road to try to tackle some of the worse areas along that section from basically Gray Avenue out west, probably to around Tharp or so, I would guess. And so it's very exciting, that's a, that's a piece of equipment that council approved, Ben, it's probably been three years ago or so, and so it took a while with COVID to get it manufactured, but it's nice to see it's actually getting out on the street, and so you'll see the street crew. If you happen to drive by this week and see them out there, please wave at them, but we're excited to see this take place. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one final note, just to note, Waffle Wednesday next week at the senior center. Yep.
Thank you. City council reports, we're gonna begin with council member Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had the opportunity to take advantage of an offer to ride along with the fire department on the 4th of July, and I know you did as well. It, it was not as busy as they have been in before, had been prior, but I will say that it was busy. And I want to extend my thanks to Chief Alexander and Battalion Chief LeBlu, who shepherded me around. We did start the night up on the levee with a bunch of folks, I'm assuming from Sutter County, to watch the fireworks in Marysville, and we got a little bit of that in before we had a, a pretty ripping grass fire down by Shanghai Bend. I've heard some comments made, both positive and negative, about the, the fireworks show and our contribution. And one of the comments seemed to allude that, you know, maybe the fireworks show's intent was, was to deter illegal fireworks, and certainly it was. And I would say that, you know, we, we continue as a council to be very sensitive to, to the illegal fireworks situation within, within our city. But I would also say that noting that how many people were up on that levee, and noting that this was a regional event with regional support, with a lot of folks regionally who are happy with it, I'm not at all, I'm not at all unhappy that we are a contributor. I think it is something that we should be proud of as a community, and even though it may not deter every illegal firework, I guarantee you that it's deterring some, and that, that part of it is worth our effort as well. Also had a chance to see the children's 4th of July parade, this was the 20th year of the 4th of July parade. I, I have to say that in all the years that I've attended, this probably was the largest attendance that we saw of that parade, and I, I think it's a great, a great event for us down in our downtown, they left already, but I also think that, I want to thank St. Andrews Church for their symphony, I think that's a, a great addition, and then all the, the work of the donors for the food that they pass out free, and it's just a nice event. Laughco meeting, I was not able to attend, but I think it's important to note that there has been a change in the, in the executive director of Laughco, and, and Mr. Libby's with us tonight, and he'll be serving in that capacity for the city and the county, and the county will be providing the legal support for that. So it, it's, it's a good move, I think, for us in the region. Mr. Benoit has served us very well, and he was looking to retire, so this is a, a good change for us with a competent person who's done that role before. Mr. Libby, thank you. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council member Pasquale.
Thank you, mayor. I too attended the 4th of July parade, I was at the tail end riding my bicycle with the kids, trying to navigate back and forth, back and forth, because it was such a, a slow pace, but I, I managed to navigate it. Great, 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 great party. The music added so much. I was approached after the 4th of July when the music all let up. Keith Lowry is, I guess, a symphony or orchestra leader, he's not the conductor, but he's a number one violinist, and he made a suggestion that I had passed on, that we, the crushed area, rock area for the pathway, that they develop a crescent shape to level that all out, because I was helping them put the chairs and, and the stands up, and that's a suggestion he had come to the ci, to me, to pass on to the city, and I, I think it's really a good one, because that added so much to that, to that parade, to have that music there, and everybody really enjoyed it, so. Other than that, Waffle Wednesday is coming up, I will be there with bells on again, and I always look forward to it, so with that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Council member Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's gonna be real short as well. I attended the transit, and with everything going on, honestly, you were there, you'll have to report out. 4th of July parade, awesome. Thanks, Mark, for starting that years and years ago, as you guys did at Fire and Chief, you and your team, heck of a good job, so glad to see it going strong all these years later. And then I met with the DBA at their last couple of meetings, so stroll was a success, they did some out briefings on that, they were happy, a lot of people down there, so, and they're energized, I can tell you, after what the last meeting was and getting that water tower to stay downtown, you guys made a lot of people happy, so thank you, guys. And thank you to my colleagues for keeping me informed and helping me stay up on everything with, everything we're dealing with right now, so I just say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it's been kind of busy, we haven't been here for a month, but I started with the PD swearing in, we've got four brand-new individuals working for our department, so that was exciting to see and meet their families. The, the fair kickoff, am I on the right page? That's right, that sounds right, right? That's happened within the last month. Okay, all right. Phew. Attended the fair kickoff, from there, we had the Ampla Health ribbon cutting for their new facility off of Garden Highway. Attended the Business Connection State of Sutter County, where Sutter County CEO Steve Smith presented what was going on with Sutter County, got us current. Did a ribbon cutting for RC Legacy Landing, and also ribbon cutting for Addiction Resource Center, which is, provides valuable resource for our community off of Live Oak Boulevard. I was on the radio 93Q promoting fireworks safety and promoting the new fireworks ordinance, and from there, went straight over to Fire Admin, where there was a fireworks safety seminar, there was a gentleman from out of the area, it wasn't ATF?
California arson.
Okay. Really opened my eyes. He, he started the presentation, showing raw footage of, of a, it looked like a small fire in Southern California, and the next thing you know, the, the entire block just goes straight up, and it was, it was an illegal lab and storage of, of illegal fireworks, and that was pretty sobering to start the whole meeting with, with that video, but it, it put it in perspective. Attended the Sutter Arts Open House, their yearly event over on Pluma Street. There was a transit, going away party for Keith Martin for the transit. I attended the 4th, very well-attended 4th of July parade on, on Pluma Street, I thought staff did an exceptional job with that. I was surprised, though, of how many members in our community still don't know that we do that, because I was putting that on social media, and they're like, where are you at? So I can just only imagine, once everybody knows about it, how, how much larger it'll get, which is a good thing. I'd like to thank Chief for allowing me to, to ride along with him on the 4th of July. I wanted to do that because I'm usually in bed by 9 o'clock, 9:30, I wanted to be able to at least speak to the problem and see it firsthand, and oh boy, oh boy, it's, it's real. I'm, I'm proud that council took the action to at least put some guardrails around the event, where we, we shortened the, the sailing time and also the discharge time, which will hopefully lead to maybe a safer night, where, where folks don't have to leave the area out of fear of, of their, their pets freaking out, or, or even having property damage on their, on their homes. So thank you, Chief, for, for allowing me that opportunity. Gilseizer, unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so that was a pretty short meeting. Met with the local rep for, for PG&E. They're trying to get a little bit more involved in community events to get their, their, their face and their name out there. I met with them to really get a better understanding of why the rates are going up, and so hopefully, maybe in the future, we might have a presentation from them, if, if there's an interest for that. Mosquito was a rather short meeting, we, essentially, we just went over the, the quarterly financial reports. Today, the city manager and I met with Senator Nilo, where we expressed some concerns and, wants for, for our community, and got to meet him. And lastly, this is a little bit of a plug, but before our next meeting, which is August 15th, I believe, August 12th, there'll be a grand opening for our new hotel, which is located over off of Bridge Street by Gap Park Holiday Inn Express. They're gonna have a grand, official grand opening between 5:30 and 7:30, and they're gonna have Dunk the Mayor, so they're gonna have a big dunk booth, where you're gonna have an opportunity to dunk the mayor, and proceeds will go towards Back the Badge and also to the ALS Association. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.